Welcome to the League of Women Voters and the Alliance for the Arts Virtual Candidates Forum. Some of the League's Voter Service activities include candidate forums and voter guides. This information is made available to the voting public to help in their decision-making process. The League of Women Voters is a nonpartisan organization that does not support or oppose candidates or political parties. Happy learning.
Welcome to a candidate forum presented by the League of Women Voters of Lee County in conjunction with the Alliance for the Arts. The purpose of these forums is to inform the voting public of the opinions of the candidates running for office. It's not a debate. There will be no cross-talk between the candidates. There won't be any comments from one candidate on another candidate's position. They will be given two minutes to open. They will be given two minutes to close. They will be given one minute to answer each question. The order of answering the questions and opening and closing is random. It'll be decided at the beginning of the forum itself. So, sit back and enjoy. Thank you. Welcome to the League of Women Voters of Lee County Candidate Forum, which we're doing in conjunction with the Alliance for the Arts. Today's forum is for the District 7, which is our at-large district for the school board. We all know the rules, how this works, so I'm just gonna go into it generally. You get two minutes to open, two minutes to close, and one minute to answer the question that's in front of you. Everybody answers the same question, trying to alternate so that people don't feel like they're being picked on. But as I wrote them down alphabetically, Mr. Bohatch, you're first. We give you a two-minute opening.
Okay, first of all, I want to thank the League, Jim, and the tech guys sponsoring the forum, and I'd like to wish Ms. Morgan the best of luck. I've known Kathleen for eight years. She's a quality individual and a class act, so good luck, Ms. Morgan. A little bit about Pete Bohatch, native Floridian. Twenty-seven years of public education. Began my career in Charlotte County as a substitute teacher. Became a teacher, dean of students, assistant principal, transferred to Lee County, fortunately became a principal at Lehigh Acres Middle. Spent a year in the middle school, and I have a lot of respect for middle school principals and middle school teachers. Decided that I wanted to move to high school, so I transferred to Lehigh Senior High School, and then was fortunate to open up Island Coast High School in Cape. Then became Director of Student Services at the district office for seven years. Oversaw social workers, school counselors, psychologists, code of student conduct, handled mainly the most serious discipline issues for the district, and then spent the latter part of my career working with the alternative schools and alternative disciplines. So, twenty-seven and a half years, it seemed went by pretty fast. Dedicated my entire career to public education. That's me.
Thank you. Ms. Morgan?
Hi, and thank you to the League and Jim, thanks for hosting us. I've been on the school board. I'm Kathleen Morgan. I've been on the school board since 2012. When I came on the school board, my first term, we had three superintendents, we had no district strategic plan, and we had a discordant board. Why am I running for reelection? I'm running because I think parents want exceptional opportunities for their kids. Education, I think taxpayers want to know that their tax dollars are being invested properly, and I think people in the community want to be able to say, "Lee County has great schools." That's a hallmark of a high-achieving district, and that's what I've been aspiring to while I've been on the board. High-achieving school districts have high-performing superintendents, they have a district strategic plan that is forward-thinking and flexible, and they have a school board that is professional and stable and sensitive to the different roles and responsibilities of the superintendent and board. And so, we have had a superintendent in place for five years, well-regarded by the community. We've had a district strategic plan in place for several years. We know it's working. Student performance has improved in all levels. English, language arts, and math graduation rate has gone up, and we're starting to make an inroad into some of the achievement gaps for different demographic groups. But, the board has struggled over the past two years to find its footing as it puts together strategies and policies to support the district's vision and vision. And that's why I'm running again, because I am really committed to building a high-quality leadership team, one that is, one that has a purpose and a focus, is stable and is supportive of the district's district strategic plan. So, I think we can get there. We've been very close. It's just a matter of putting together a group of people who can agree on the common pro-
Thank you. I'll just start with the questions. I'm gonna be a little more relaxed, I think, about the time if we, if, I'll make that decision as we go. There's just not enough people here to, for it to be a problem. But, the first question is, and this is for Mr. Bohatch. What are the most important challenges facing the school board, and how do you propose to address them?
Well, I think moving forward, obviously COVID-19 and the return to school. Really, really concerned, you know, the commissioner put out his order, the schools must be open for five days. I believe that we're not ready at this point. I haven't seen a solid plan. I understand that the board's gonna be meeting, I think, this afternoon to try to finalize the plans, but very, very concerned about the reopening. As a former high school administrator, I know firsthand what a school looks like. You've got parent drop-off, you've got the bus ramp, you've got student parking, multiple entries into a school. You know, how are we gonna monitor the students? Who's sick? Who's not? Are they checking them on the bus? How are we gonna separate them in classrooms, the lunchroom, assemblies, pep rallies? So, extremely concerned about the reopening. I really believe that my experience as a school administrator would be beneficial to the board and the community moving forward, but very, very concerned about the reopening and the plans.
Thank you. Ms. Morgan?
Yeah, taking a little bit longer look, a longer-term look at it, I think there are really three issues. One is leadership, another is funding, and the third is structural change. We need quality leadership, particularly at a time like COVID. When we first shut down in the fourth quarter, staff stepped on it, and we got a lot of great stuff done. It's because we had a plan, people were on the same path, they knew their responsibilities. Funding is a problem going forward. How are we gonna pay teachers? We have got to increase teachers' salaries. And then structural change. I see COVID-19 as an opportunity, long-term, to think seriously about how teaching and learning should take place, particularly in an environment where we know virtual learning works for some and it doesn't work for others. Thank you.
Ms. Morgan, this question would be for you, then. What is your plan to make the increase in funding from the state equitable for seasoned teachers?
I don't know what the plan is, because staff is working on it. You know that we got 400 million for the starting salary. The problem is that a teacher with two decades in may not even be making that starting salary. And we got another hundred, why I say "we," the state got another 100 million to make up that difference. But honestly, I'm not sure what Lee County School District will be allocated will be enough to raise everybody to the minimum 47.5. I know that that will be a negotiation between the union and the district, and I know that they had started on that path, and that's where we are.
Thank you. Mr. Bohatch?
Well, obviously, the contracts that have to be negotiated with a bargaining unit. I do have concerns related to teacher salaries over the past few years. Administrators at the executive level and above have received upwards of 30% pay raises to reach market value. Not that they don't deserve the salaries, but how can you, how can you look yourself in the mirror and say, "We're gonna give administrators a 30% raise," yet teachers haven't received such equal raises? So, I'm very, very concerned about how we're gonna take care of teachers. I've seen it. I've seen it in seventeen years here, and it's gonna have to be bargained, and if I'm on the board, I'm certainly gonna encourage the superintendent and members of the leadership team to make teacher salaries a priority, for sure. You know, finding good teachers and retaining good teachers is a huge problem here in Lee County. They can't afford to live. The cost of living here, there were schools that finished the school year with substitutes in front of students, which to me is inexcusable.
Thank you. Mr. Bohatch, the Supreme Court has recently decided that religious schools must be treated the same way other private schools are treated. How will this impact the Lee County Schools budget and its overall planning?
Well, first of all, I'm very disappointed in the decision. I think parents have a choice: public school, private school, or homeschool. So, I'm really scratching my head on that decision. We, you know, we're grossly underfunded in the state of Florida for students, and was very disappointed to see that decision come through, and very, very, very concerned about it.
All right, thank you. Ms. Morgan?
Well, I've also been concerned about the, what I call, non-traditional schools that are receiving money from the state, because the traditional public schools, which is, we're talking about the Lee County School District, traditional, non-charter, are held to different standards and requirements than charter schools, private schools, religious schools. And taxpayer dollars are going to some of those schools without any accountability to the taxpayer for how those dollars are spent, and whether or not they actually have an impact on a quality educational opportunity for the children. So, I am generally concerned with the effort to move money away from traditional public schools, to defund those in favor of private and religious institutions. Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Morgan, we'll stay with you for a moment here.
Sure.
What financial efficiencies would you propose to address funding gaps while addressing growth, teacher retention, and safety? I think you mentioned all of those.
Yeah, so, let's see. I honestly, I think we're at the precipice. For the past, not this year, so we're not counting this year, for the past several years, we've received under a dollar total in increase in our operating funds. At the same time, we've been able to give, or we have made changes so that we could give teachers 3% increases over that period of time. So, I think, for all intents and purposes, from an operating point of view, we are really sitting on the precipice. We cannot, without cannibalizing, support for student education in the classroom. We cannot continue on this path. With respect to capital, we've done well, because the community supported the board when it came out and requested the capital funding. And I've watched the ISOC meetings, that's the Independent Advisory Committee to the school board and superintendent on the use of the tax dollars, and that appears to be going very well, although we're going to have to completely rethink funding as a result of the loss of sales tax during the COVID crisis.
Mr. Bohatch?
Well, I think we need to look within the district with regards to cost savings and capital funding. Let me cite a couple examples. The student assignment system. About six weeks ago, I was driving down one of the roads in the village, and I noticed three or four different signs on the same street from different schools. And, so, those are four families that are bused to four different schools from the same street. As a principal, I can recall activity buses arriving every day on campus after practice to transport one or two students back home at a cost of over a million dollars a year. So, I could go on about the transportation system. As a principal at Island Coast, I had students arrive on campus. I was at Island Coast, North Cape, that passed Ida Bay or Turner and Cape High before they landed at Island Coast. So, to me, that's a tragedy and a waste of taxpayers' dollars. And then with regards to the capital plan, we need to do a better job. We've got a high school in Benita that's half-full. We've got students in Lehigh, the east zone, that are climbing on top of one another, so there needs to be better planning related to future growth.
Thank you. Mr. Bohatch, what would you propose to increase the number of Lee County children who enter kindergarten ready to learn?
Well, that's an easy one. That's the one I fought for when I was Director of Student Services, that fell on deaf ears, and the answer all I always got was, "We don't have the space. We don't have the space. We can't accommodate them." So, I did a little bit of research back in my role as Director of Student Services. We had James Stephens Academy, which is at half-capacity. Right down the road, you've got Fort Myers Middle Academy at half-capacity. My suggestion was to combine the two to free up one of the campuses to expand the pre-K program. That was just one example there. I don't wanna hear, "We don't have space." We've got space. Take a look at the complex on Michigan Avenue with the Teen Parent Program, Success Academy, and move success over to Fort Myers. Do something, but space is not an issue here. So, open up the seats. Kindergarten reading is, that's the key. We all know, that research all suggests that if students are ready at kindergarten, they're gonna perform better academically. So, that's where I stand.
Thank you. Ms. Morgan?
Yeah, I don't think the issue is so much about space. There is space. The problem is the access, family access to high-quality early child education. Several years ago, the district received a grant to work with the Learning Coalition to provide additional training to some of the private and not-for-profit providers who were preparing kids for kindergarten, in an effort to make certain that they knew what the requirements were when children came into kindergarten. In our most recent update to that grant, what we had to say was that we struggle to keep teachers in those programs, because they're not well-paid. And here's another interesting fact, I think. The career in tech education. We all know that we need to have more people in early childhood, but the state does not recognize early childhood education as a career opportunity for high school graduates. So, it does not provide funding for those academies, and the students who want to go into early childhood education have to pay $450 as an entrance fee, and they have to do, as a fee, and then they have to do six months of internship, which is totally different than any other certification offered to students across the state. So, it's a staffing problem, it's an access problem.
Thank you. Ms. Morgan, what efforts would you propose to ensure diversity and inclusion of administrators, education, educators, and students? Diversity and inclusion.
That's a real struggle. You know that we have majority-minority population, and we know that diversity is a problem in terms of children's academic achievements. And from a strategic planning point of view, a year-to-year planning point of view, we can dig down and identify areas that we can focus on to make a difference for those kids, and that's exactly what we're doing. You pick the low-hanging fruit, then you go and find the things that are difficult to react to, for example, early childhood. With, gosh, where was I going with that? Jim, what was the question again? I went off on a tangent.
What efforts would you propose to ensure diversity and inclusion of administrators, educators, and students?
Yeah, so, the big issue, one of the big issues for us is administrators, and that's because we have a tough time attracting candidates who look like the kids in our schools, which is critical. We have an Equity and Diversity Advisory Committee that works with our staff to give us ideas about how to recruit and retain minority staff. We have hired a Diversity and Inclusion Director to, no, in 2018, we hired one, and he is also helping with those efforts. But there's also a community problem. People come here and they don't want to stay, because it's not a great, it's not a young community, and the salaries aren't there. So, across the board, it's difficult.
Mr. Bohatch?
Yeah, I would agree that it's difficult to recruit minorities to Lee County because of the pay, obviously the pay, but we need to focus on the now and what we have, and the administrators that we have, and provide training, diversity training. You know, to have a one-hour training at the start of each school year, to me, is insufficient. In my former role as Director of Student Services, dozens and dozens of cases came across my desk that could have been handled differently with the proper training. I always use this one example, because this one really touches home. There was a student at James Stephens Academy. I believe he was a sixth grader. He was horsing around in class, goofing around, and the teacher took him outside and talked to him and said, "Listen, I want you to go inside and apologize to the class." So, the student and the teacher walked back into the classroom, and the student told the class, "My bad." Teacher sent the kid time out to the internal suspension room, because he was being disrespectful. That's just one example of many, many, many I could use, that where administrators, teachers, all need training to be able to relate to a lot of our students. Big gap, gap in Lee County.
Yeah.
Mr. Bohatch, how would you ensure that all students have a safe environment and protection from weapons, assault, sexual assault, and bullying?
Well, once again, all comes down to training. You gotta have the proper training, the code of conduct is solid, all of those offenses that you mentioned, or Cessar offenses, Level III offenses, that principals have the ability to recommend expulsion or alternative placement. So, training is huge, and I know the superintendent is huge on active supervision. You know, we've got millions of dollars of cameras across all schools, but providing administrators with the proper training that the class change occurs. You need to stand in the hallway. Lunchroom needs to be covered. The bus ramp needs to be covered. So, active supervision is huge. You need to be out and about. I can remember telling a lot of my staff members at the beginning of the year that we're outnumbered. You know, there's 2,000 of them, and there's 150 of us, so you need to be out and about, and mainly to build relationships with students. Very few incidents happen without an adult knowing about it. So, training, visibility, that's what you gotta do.
Thank you. Ms. Morgan?
Yeah, I have to agree with Pete, because I think that we, with our code of conduct, our contracts, our student, our assessment teams, and our SROs, and the technology that we have in place and some of the software, we have the structure. Everything is there. I think the difficult part is making certain that everybody is on board with policy and practices that are built into those systems. You know, you always have people talking about restorative justice. You always have people who come out and say, "Oh, I love it," and they eat it up, and they'll train, and they'll do it, and they'll train other people in their school. And there are people who sit and watch and say, "Maybe, I'll watch and see how it goes." And there are other people who will say, "Uh-uh, not for me. That's not how I'm gonna operate my classroom." So, it's a real struggle to change the culture. I think training is key, and identifying where the leadership has not done a good job of training and supporting staff.
Thank you. Ms. Morgan, how would you ensure that all Lee County students receive an excellent education?
So, that goes back to one of the jobs of the school board, which is to have a strategic plan. So, we started out with a short one a couple of years ago, and we've built it out to 2030. The reasoning being that a kindergartner entering in 2020 is going to have to be able to work and survive in 2034 with skills, experience, and content knowledge that we don't know they'll need today. So, we have to make certain that our plan has every child on a growth progression plan that's consistent with what they need, but also forward-thinking in terms of what they are going to need down the road. So, that's good planning, and everybody committed to the same vision and goals.
Thank you. Mr. Bohatch?
Yeah, I agree with Ms. Morgan. There is a solid plan, in my opinion. It's not, the plan isn't the problem. We've had three chief academic officers under Dr. Atkins' tenure in five years. We've had five over the past, I think, seven or eight years, so constant turnover, you know, and that division, it isn't helping. You know, everyone's talking about improving graduation rates and where we rank. Let me shoot some stats to you right now, and you can pick them up off the DOE website from 18, 19. English, language arts, ELA, 45% of our students below grade average. Math, 41% of our students below grade average. Science, 47% of our students below grade average, below the state average in all three of the categories right there. So, really, really concerning. I'm glad you asked that question. I haven't heard a lot about academics and the concern for student achievement, you know, throughout the campaign here, but we got a serious issue here in Lee County, and in my opinion, it's the turnover. The turnover in that division, you know, the Dr. Spiro, who's in there now, to me, is capable. Let's just hope he sticks around.
Thank you. Mr. Bohatch, how is educational excellence affected by charter schools, or homeschools, or overcrowding?
Well, it gives, it certainly gives parents a choice. I could tell you from experience in sitting at the district level and as a principal, I was concerned on how principals used charter schools to get rid of students, for lack of a better word, especially closer to graduation, when a student was woefully behind on credits, they would be counseled out to attend a charter school. So, to me, gaming the system, unfortunate, sad, giving students false hope, "Hey, listen, go to this charter school over there, they got a credit recovery program, you're gonna be able to get your credits, you can graduate in two years." When the reality is, the reality is, those students would end up dropping out of school. So, I think parents deserve a choice, and need a choice. Charters, we've got a few that are excellent. The majority are not doing a good job. If you pull their graduation rates, many are well below 50%. Homeschool, but that's a parent's choice right there. There's a lot of parents that are capable of doing it. I think you're gonna see a spike in numbers in homeschool, and leave virtual school, you know, post-COVID-19.
Thank you. Ms. Morgan?
With respect to charter schools, my issue with charter schools is they're essentially public-sponsored private schools, because many of them get to cherry-pick their students. And even if they don't, they say there's a lottery system. The fact of the matter is, there are students that they can support and students they can't support. And the students they can't support end up back in the public school system. I don't believe, I mean, I believe in choice. I believe there's a lot of choice in Lee County. I don't believe having a separate educational system is the right way to do choice. With respect to homeschooling, I had a child who was injured as a junior in high school, and he was homeschooled for four months, and it totally changed my perspective on homeschooling and what we can accomplish using teacher time more effectively and efficiently in public education. Overcrowding, we have an overcrowding problem, but it's being addressed, because we're in the process of building the high school, a middle school, and another elementary middle school. So, thanks to the sales tax dollars, we are in good position to accommodate students and do away with our overcrowding problem.
All right. That concludes the questions that I had for you. The people, very quick on here. But, it's time to close, and since Tiffany gave her opening second, she can have her closing first. It's two minutes.
Okay, I just want to respond to a couple of things. First of all, the 30% increase in administrator salary was to get administrators to 50% of the average salary in the state of Florida. For the previous three years, the district had made a strategic effort to get teachers there first. So, teachers were at or above 50%. We were on our way to 75%. Pete talked about transportation. The problem with transportation is that you can't offer, or the problem with choice is you can't offer every program in every school. So, you've got to decide that you'll offer certain programs in certain schools, and then give kids access to those programs. That makes a lot of sense in middle school and a lot of sense in high school. But we are changing the proximity plan, so that we will not be doing that transporting past one school to go to another school for elementary students. And I think that's really important, because we expect, one, that that will cut our transportation costs, but also that it will create more of a sense of neighborhood schools, even though it's difficult in Lee County to have neighborhood schools. I come back to my original statement. I think we can, we are an achieving school district. We have a great superintendent, we have a plan. Yes, there is absolutely work to be done. We struggle with our demographics, but we continue to make progress. I am concerned about building a high-quality school board, so that the community and educators respect the work and decisions that come out of district leadership. So, that's why I'm running, and I hope you out there will contact me if you have any questions about anything I've talked about today. And again, thank you to the League of Women Voters for this opportunity. This is awesome. Very grateful. Thank you. this is awesome, very grateful, thank you.
Mr. Bohatch?
Yes, okay, I need to address a couple issues here, the comment regards to struggling demographics in Lee County, I don't know if a lot of folks are aware of the district, the state rankings that the districts receive every year, in 1819, Lee County was 38th, ranked 38 out of 67 school districts, in fact, we slipped, I believe, six ranks in that school year right there, so we're headed, the slide is going like this, headed down, and about demographics, Dade County, you know, the largest school district in the country, 15 out of 67, so I don't know of any district that's more diverse than Dade County, but I just had to mention that at that point right there. Real concern about the academics here, like I mentioned earlier, we're below the state average in ELA, math, and science, you could talk about gains, we're not doing it fast enough, every child matters, we talked about the graduation rate, yeah, the numbers are coming up, because we're shifting all the students over to the charters. What I bring to the table, 27 and a half years of experience working in a public school, I've performed every job, I was a teacher, dean of students, assistant principal, I've done everything, I understand schools, I believe it's critical at this point to represent the board and represent the community, to have somebody on the board that gets it, that really understands what goes on on a day-to-day basis, I've been there, I've lived it, I have a passion for education, I have a passion for students, and I look forward to serving the students and community in Lee County.
Thank you very much, and on behalf of the League of Women Voters of Lee County and the Alliance for the Arts, we thank you for coming down today, I think I said earlier that this is one of the, one of the types of races that people in this county are the most interested in, so again, thank you very much, and good luck to both of you.
Good luck.
Thank you.